Testing one, two, three. Is this on? Testing one, two, three.
This meeting will come to order. This is a meeting, a regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Gambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
We have a quorum. All members are present. Here is a summation of the agenda for tonight. We will approve minutes. We will hear reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, including a report on the Sustainability Action Plan. We will hear from council committees and then members of the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We will entertain appointments to boards and commissions. We will hear legislation for second reading and resolutions, including ordinance 2003 to amend Title IV of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations, re-adding Chapter 4.32, NonConsensual Towing Businesses, and Ordinance 2001 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 3.2-acre property from Commercial Limited to a planned unit development, and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 105 South P. Ellis Drive, Curry Urban Properties petitioner. We will then go to legislation for first reading, which will include ordinance 2004 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning property from business park and residential single-family to join an existing planned unit development, and to approve the associated district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive, Trinitas petitioner. We will entertain additional public comment, review the council's schedule, and then adjourn. Why don't we start with the approval of minutes? Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
So.
We have a motion in a second. Can you elaborate?
Yes, we have before us minutes from 2006 that were presented to us for approval about 18 months ago in 2018. And we would normally, let me try to see. So when the membership of a deliberative body changes, Robert's Rules of Order recommends that a committee review the minutes and make a recommendation for their approval. So the membership of this body, the city council, has obviously changed since those minutes of 2006. But given that we've all had a chance to read the minutes and check them, we can make a motion in order to take them up in our ordinary course of business, which is the motion that I just made, rather than referring them to a committee. Mr. Sherman, did I capture that accurately? Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions from members about the approval of these minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Shall we make this a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Let's try this again. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Gambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Sandberg?
Yes.
That's 8:01. The minutes for the 27th, 28th, and 29th of November, and the 4th, 7th, 11th, 13th, and 14th of December 2006 have been accepted. Are there any other minutes for approval? Okay, let's go now to reports from council members. I'll start on my, sorry, I'll start at my right with Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Gambaluri?
Yes, just a thank you to those residents who joined us for my constituent meeting on Saturday. They will be held the first Saturday of every month, 1:30, here in the McCloskey Conference Room, and they are open to the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report.
Councilmember Sims?
No report.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, I have already made mention of the passing of Peter Jacoby recently, and recently we have also lost some tremendous contributors to our arts community. I want to make mention of Michael Wilkerson, who was a faculty member with the Arts Administration Program at Spia, who recently died too soon, as well as, in yesterday's paper, we read of the passing of Paul Sturm, who, for those of us that knew him, he was a force of nature like no one else. He had a personality that's larger than life, and it's really hard to imagine him not being with us again. He was an active member, as was Michael Wilkerson, of the Bloomington Arts Commission, so many boards, so many supports for Lotus, and, just, it's just hard to imagine the passing of those two individuals. So I do want to give them tribute. I want to offer thanks for their service. But the gentleman whose obituary also appeared in yesterday's paper along with Paul Sturm, who I wish to pay tribute to, is someone that was very personal in my life, and that's Robert Stoll, who was the director of many years with the School of Music and the IU Singing Hoosiers. And this is a gentleman who was a consummate professional. He was a gentleman. He had boundless energy, and he taught some of the most valuable lessons in life that I have ever learned, that I still use to this day in my daily activities and in my professional pursuits. I hope all of us have experienced a teacher in your life who is a mentor and a true guide, who really does teach you not to accept anything less than what is good, what is exceptional, and what is perfect. He was an incredible person in my life, as well as anyone who had the privilege of being a part of the School of Music and the IU Singing Hoosiers. So again, a lot of loss to the arts community in a fairly short time, and again, my thanks to Robert Stoll and everyone that he has touched throughout his teaching and his incredible and ethical life. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I'd like to thank everybody who participated in a little coffee we had on Saturday at Need More Coffee to discuss the development on 105 or 103 P. Ellis Drive. So that was really helpful to me. I learned a lot, and I will try to be a good advocate for your comments and the information you passed along. So, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes. We have a local journalist, Dave Askins, who's in the audience tonight, who wrote an opinion editorial earlier this week, the subject of which was Indiana's Open Door Law, and he invited council members to report and share their thoughts about the mayor's local income tax proposal, which was announced on January 1 of this year at this meeting, and I'd like to oblige. So I'm going to give a little bit of background and context, and then explain what work I've been doing on this proposal and issue. So by way of background, Indiana's Open Door Law regulates and provides guidance on, for the meetings we all have as council members, and how they're open to the public when a quorum of members is meeting to conduct official business. There are exceptions and narrowly carved rules around this. One is called a caucus exception, which was the subject of Mr. Askins' editorial. A caucus, as defined in the statute, says it is a gathering of members of a political party or coalition which is held for purposes of planning political strategy and holding discussions designed to prepare the members for taking official action. So that's a very narrowly prescribed allowance for members of a coalition or political party to meet and discuss political strategy. And while I'm new to this body, my understanding is that the city council, and I think our county council colleagues as well, have used this exception from time to time to do exactly that, to discuss political strategy around certain issues. And we have done so in my time on the council so far this year. And I think that's a legitimate use, as allowed by the state legislature. In fact, I spoke with our Indiana local, I'm sorry, public access counselor, Luke Britt, up at the Accelerate Indiana Municipalities Conference a couple weeks ago about this very issue, clarifying my understanding. It is my intent to follow it assiduously and make sure that we are open and forthcoming in our deliberations and conducting of official business as the Open Door Law prescribes. So, that said and explained, I'll add a little bit of context from Mr. Askins' editorial. He noted that he believes a lack of public discussion over the last month by the city council about a proposed local income tax increase could be due to the council's use of the caucus exception in the Open Door Law. He notes that it's the city council, not the mayor, that has the ability to enact a local income tax increase, and he noted that this topic has not appeared on a regular meeting agenda. He posits that one possible explanation for the silence is that the city council has been discussing the local income tax council in closed caucus gatherings, shielded from public view instead of at its public meetings. So I wanted to use my report to clarify that that is not the case. We have not been discussing this issue in caucus beyond in mere passing as it relates to political strategy, but it has not been the subject of serious discussion. I have been putting in a fair amount of work in this area, but it has not been at caucus meetings. So I wanted to use another minute or two of my report time here to clarify the work I have been doing. So, again, additional context. The mayor on January 1 proposed a 0.5% change in our local income tax to help provide additional revenue to ensure that Bloomington has a strong and resilient economy and community for decades to come in a world that is facing substantial environmental disruption and a changed climate. We'll hear our report from staff later tonight about how our actions on the Sustainability Action Plan are going. So as we explore this possibility, this initial proposal from the mayor, I and a few other council colleagues have begun to have some meetings and think about next steps and how to get the public involved in a really meaningful way, which I think is important. The public should have a central role in shaping how this proposal is crafted, and I think also getting our local income tax council members, especially and including our county council colleagues, involved in a meaningful conversation about this proposal. So the meetings I've been having have been with other city council members, members of staff, members of the county council, other stakeholders, including the Chamber of Commerce, folks from IU's Environmental Resilience Institute, and others. These have all been what I would call ordinary business meetings in my conducting business related to this issue. Typically, these meetings are two or three or four people, sometimes with one or two other council members, but not a quorum, and thus not subject to the Open Door Law. They aren't public meetings as described in the Open Door Law. Any notes or records or emails related to those exchanges would of course be subject to the Public Records Act, which has to do with what is a public record in the course of business. But I guess I wanted to clarify that Mr. Askins' worst fear about what might be happening in a caucus related to this proposal is just simply not accurate. There have been meetings. It hasn't been a subject of the agenda yet at a council meeting, but it will be soon. We're nearing, you know, a agreement on what makes sense in terms of next steps for public process, how to get the public involved in a community conversation. But that takes a little time to have those conversations and set a date, and make sure the right people can be involved, and figure out what it is you want presented at a meeting like that. So that's the type of preparation work I've been doing in relation to the mayor's proposal about a local income tax increase. So I wanted to take this moment to clarify all that, and I'd be happy to speak with Mr. Askins further about those details, but I thought it would be relevant for the members of the public who read that piece and who were interested to hear some of the ongoing work that has happened and in what context that has occurred. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Flaherty, for his report because it reflects really what I would have said as well, and that is that the Open Door Law exception for caucuses has not been used to discuss this particular proposal from the mayor. I would like to, except maybe tangentially, but I would like to add that the proposal from the mayor on New Year's Day at his swearing-in, at our swearing-in, was not something discussed with city council members beforehand. So we have not had time to develop ideas of how to implement this tax and how to work with the public and our colleagues in Ellettsville and on the county government to discuss this possibility. So if it seemed like there was an announcement and then radio silence, it is perhaps because the announcement came from one body, the mayor and his office, and the radio silence has been attributed to another body. You know, if maybe the proposal had come from us and then we had been silent for four weeks, then I could understand some skepticism from the public. So for myself personally, as an elected representative, I am in support of raising funds to address the economic and social changes that will undoubtedly impact our community due to climate change. There are many projects that are necessary to become a resilient economy in the face of these changes, including spending, expanding our Bloomington Transit Services. And there are currently not other identified funds to pay for these expensive changes that we need in our community. So with that in mind, I am initially very much in favor of the proposal, but it remains to be fleshed out, and I very much value talking with our county colleagues and making sure that we are on the same page. It is currently the law that the local income tax council has 100 votes, and 58 of those go to the city council. So we currently have a majority, although that, there are some noises at the state level that that may change. But to me, that does not mean we should act unilaterally, not at all. We can get a lot more done if the county and the city work together on making the changes needed. And just as a matter of fairness, I think it would be much, much more appropriate if a majority of the county council also were in favor of the tax, because it affects everybody in the county. So those are my comments for this evening, and again, I welcome any journalist who is wondering about decisions made or decisions not made to please reach out to us individually, because I'm not aware that that was the case in this particular journalist's opinion piece. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two items to mention tonight. One is I wanted to echo the eulogies given so eloquently by Councilmember Sandberg to the members of the arts community we lost. I did not know Bob Stoll, but I knew, I know the reputation of the Singing Hoosiers, which is worldwide, and his loss is a great one, as is Paul Sturm's. He was a friend of WFHB and a composer of some note, among many other artistic endeavors that he engaged in, and he was a cut-up as well, and he will be greatly missed. I did want to say a word too about Mike Wilkerson, who I served with on the Lotus Festival Board of Directors about 20 years ago, and, you know, universal, the universal opinion of him was a stand-up guy who supported people who were artists or seeking careers in the arts, and I was proud to count him as a friend. So I, you know, all three of these men will be missed. Tonight, I also wanted to mention that, you know, I have been trying to instill a new kind of meeting discipline where we start paying attention to the time that we use. And so people can see that for several months I've been experimenting with timers in the chambers that have had some success, and I've been trying to promote procedures involving committees that, all in the interest of preventing late-night meetings. We have a 10:30 rule for a reason, and I want to respect it. I'm going to try to make sure that this meeting, for example, does not go past 11 o'clock, no matter what, but it means time limits on everybody, including council members. I take that very seriously, and I'll be proposing various motions tonight to limit the amount of time that people can speak. I just want to let my colleagues know that if an issue is really pressing and we need to take a few more minutes to discuss a given item, we can do that with a two-thirds vote. I would just ask that we use that privilege with caution, that the overall goal is to spread the deliberation over calendar time if we have to, rather than to go all night. I don't think that we're going to need to go all night tonight, but we will have a couple of pretty heavy topics to discuss. So with that, Councilmember Piedmont Smith has one additional thing to say. Use your privilege wisely.
Yes, I'm very sorry. I, so I said that at a caucus meeting, we only spoke tangentially of the proposed local income tax, and I need to correct myself, because it actually was an agenda item, but it was not, it was more about getting an update from the mayor on his thoughts on it, and not any strategy or plans for implementing it, or ideas for how to use it, or it was not really substantive. So I just wanted to correct that, since it was actually an item we talked about.
Thank you.
In a legal fashion.
We now go to reports from the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on an item not the subject of legislation tonight? Raise your hand, please.
Mayor, next.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped. My bad. I'm so sorry, and we have council committees as well. I skipped down. We're going now to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe Mr. Mayor is here to present.
Thank you for that comment. I appreciate that thing. I won't be long. I do have to say, thank you for letting me be here with you. It is a momentous day in American history in Washington, D.C. I hate to bring that up, but for the third time in history of our country, we had an impeachment, it was an acquittal today, from my perspective of deplorable conduct at the presidential level and shameful conduct at the senate level. I will only say, it is a reminder of how important local government is in these days to demonstrate integrity, to reflect our values, and to work together to fix problems and meet challenges. So I look forward to doing that with you. I'm here to introduce the annual progress report on sustainability, which Lauren Travis will share in a moment, summarizing substantial progress that we made in 2019 toward the many dozens of goals of the very ambitious Sustainability Action Plan adopted in 2018. In the past year alone, there are a number of accomplishments that we can be proud about. Among them, opening Switchyard Park, cultivating green space, restoring degraded land, a lead building, raised garden beds, daylighting streams, creating habitat, planting trees, promoting accessibility and alternate transportation options, and really creating a quality-of-life asset for all contributing to equity in our communities. Second, noting, we have installed thousands of smart water meters in 2019, which will give us much better control over usage and conservation, and eliminate the driving of multiple vehicles checking meters. We've also developed several transportation plans to better assess how people in Bloomington can and should get around with a goal toward limiting our carbon footprint, including the transportation plan, BT's route optimization study, and a transportation demand management plan to be released very soon. There are many other accomplishments, including the UDO, let's not forget that, and stormwater grants and many others, and some not completed. But most importantly, we are building momentum and leading. Our city is recognized on the state, national, and global level for climate action, winning the Greening the Government Award at the state level, earning EPA's Green Power Partner status at a national level, and as a member of the Global Covenant of Mayors of over 10,000 cities and local governments across the globe, with rigorous yearly reporting to the Carbon Disclosure Project, which declared us a top city demonstrating climate leadership. The Sustainability Plan is a living document with a five-year timeline through 2023. With the goals we have yet to meet, we're looking closely to see how best to sequence them over the coming years. Nothing is being dropped. Climate change is an existential threat to our planet, and everyone has a part to play in responding. Thank you for embracing the Sustainability Plan since 2018, and for cooperating and leading in our community's momentum. We offer tonight's progress report and subsequent reports to the community and to the council in the interest of transparency and accountability for us all. I want to thank our Sustainability Director, Lauren Travis, who works hard every day to move our community forward in this regard, and I thank you, Lauren, for presenting the report and sharing more details with the council and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. The report will be 15 minutes, and there'll be five minutes of questions, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, for your introduction. My name is Lauren Travis, and I have the pleasure to serve as Bloomington's Assistant Director of Sustainability. In this role, I am fortunate to work with every department and the community to reduce our environmental impacts. I'm here today to provide counsel with a progress report on Bloomington's achievements of the goals of the 2018 Sustainability Action Plan. The Sustainability Action Plan was the first of its kind for Bloomington. The intent of the plan was to provide the community with a five-year roadmap and strategy of how to make Bloomington more sustainable. The eight chapters include recommendations of ways that we can work together to reduce our emissions, waste, and water use, restore the natural environment, and increase access to local food. This represents the end of the plan's first year of implementation. As a city, we are learning as we implement the recommendations about what it looks like to build a thriving and resilient community, and how to become more proactive in the face of a rapidly changing climate. Bloomington's vision is to lead in sustainability by working collaboratively as a community to combat difficult challenges like addressing the impacts of climate change, preserving ecosystems, and advancing sustainable practices in all aspects of our daily lives. The city is working to lead by example. This plan is the first time that we have an integrated, cross-departmental effort to cohesively implement these sustainability practices into city operations and across the community. These goals are measurable and were identified and prioritized based on substantial public and staff input to align with past city goals and successes. 2019, as the mayor mentioned, was a year of action, and the city achieved many milestones. Of the 50 actions planned for last year, time and energy were put towards the ones that were the most fundamental to meeting the plan's objectives. 10 others were not completed by the end of the year, but those goals are still in progress. Others were not met because either they are no longer a strategic priority right now, or are either slowed down to technology staffing or capacity issues. The 2019 actions that I'll outline later in the presentation were bold, ambitious, and challenging to achieve. Here are some examples of what we achieved in the last year. The city measured the community's greenhouse gas emissions to evaluate our contributions to climate change, and created new policies such as incentives for construction to meet higher sustainability standards. The city supported expanding solar power generation and began the process of switching city and transit fleets towards electric vehicles. One year ago, we had little information about water usage. Today, thousands of new water meters are installed across Bloomington. With last year's focus on local food access, the city started improving the understanding of issues of community access to local fresh and healthy food. 2019 was also the debut of the largest park in city history, Switchyard Park. The city still has many opportunities for growth in 2020, improvements to waste reduction practices, and alternative transportation, as well as closer collaboration with other sectors to promote practices. I have provided counsel with a reference report to offer more details about our progress. While I have limited time today, I recommend reviewing the full 2019 progress report, which can be found on the city website, developed in conjunction with our Director of Innovation. I will now highlight the areas that we have made the most progress in the last year. The initiatives of greater impact are circled on my slides. The 2018 greenhouse gas report was presented to the community to illustrate the sources of Bloomington's carbon pollution and contribution to the climate crisis. The report confirmed that the focus of Bloomington's emissions reduction moving forward are in energy use, transportation, and waste management. The city is actively organizing to respond to the The city is actively organizing to respond to the climate crisis. Shortly after the report release, the mayor convened a climate action team of department heads to better mitigate and manage the city's contribution to emissions. The city is actively developing strategies to assist the community in overall reduction and preparation for climate impacts. Now that the city has established a consistent methodology for measurement, the administration, under the Economic and Sustainable Development Department's leadership, is working towards the next Sustainability Action Plan goal. This year, we are conducting Bloomington's first climate vulnerability assessment and action plan. This is the next step identified to position the city to better prepare for increasing flooding and heat impacts that Bloomington is already experiencing. It is becoming more common in new construction to design buildings with sustainability in mind. The updated Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, promotes more sustainable land use and development standards. In 2019, planning and transportation led this process to revise incentives for building practices for new construction. These incentives will help encourage developers to adopt sustainable building features, and the utilization of this incentive will be tracked and reported on next year. There is leadership in sustainable design already happening in our community through green building certification. Three new LEED-certified buildings were built on IU's campus, and the Switchyard Pavilion and Cascade's clubhouse have applied for LEED certification in accordance with the city's green building ordinance for municipal buildings. We have another exemplary sustainable business practice close by with the adaptive reuse of the mill. The mill actually received the Indiana Landmarks Top Award for Outstanding Restoration last year. These sort of practices are the ones that helped Bloomington to receive a grant from US Bank to be part of a small group of cities to complete a certification through LEED for cities and communities, which will be complete by the end of this year. Bloomington has been continually supporting the growth of solar energy and was recognized in 2019 as an EPA green power partner for our generation on city facilities. Now that 32 sites are installed in operational, production has nearly doubled over the last year in terms of solar power. The city and nonprofit partnership to support Solarize Bloomington has exceeded expectations, and over the last three years, Solarize has resulted in over 250 homes in Bloomington and Monroe County with solar. Forty-eight separate households signed contracts for the Residential Solar Initiative in 2018, and last year, participation in the initiative increased to 63. Outside of Solarize, Monroe County leads in renewable energy with over 600 households now producing solar energy on their own. However, there's always room for growth, and the upcoming renewables potential study will serve to guide future investments in energy efficiency and renewables. Progress to increase safe, affordable, and low-carbon transportation options was led last year, namely by Bloomington Transit and the Planning and Transportation Department. Bloomington was the only Indiana city to win a low-no-emissions grant from the Federal Transit Authority, and Bloomington Transit will be using those funds to procure electric buses. These buses will be more sustainable by reducing fuel use and will be delivered and operational in 2020. Bus route efficiency was also studied through the Route Optimization Study. This study's recommendations will be implemented in 2020 to improve efficiency and service delivery for Bloomington Transit. Non-vehicular travel is another focus of the Sustainability Action Plan. Pedestrian mobility was improved by the repair of over 6,500 linear feet of sidewalk. Though there is progress to be made over the trail network, Bloomington's walkability is improving, and investments due to the bicentennial bond projects and planned capital infrastructure will continue to aid this improvement. As mentioned, transportation planning initiatives were also a crucial action taken in 2019. The completion of the transportation plan and transportation demand management plan will continue to guide current and future investments in multimodal transportation and reduce single-vehicle occupancy use. We already know that many in the community experience issues with accessing healthy, affordable, and locally-produced food. Improvements to the local food economy require further understanding of this disconnect between local producers and consumers of food. A big achievement last year was securing grant funding through the Department of Agriculture to hire the city's first-ever local food coordinator. Rachel's work has helped achieve multiple Sustainability Action Plan goals by measuring food purchasing and meeting with hundreds of different growers and buyers to understand their challenges. As a department, Economic and Sustainable Development has also sought to better understand why residents lack access. The Local Food Access Survey sent last month to 4,000 households, was developed last year in partnership with the Bloomington Food Policy Council, after feedback from three focus groups of food insecure residents. We look forward to the results of the survey, a Sustainability Action Plan goal, which will be available publicly this spring. Waste continues to present a challenge, and substantial progress must be made to improve practices and reduce community waste. Recycling contamination continues to be a challenge for haulers. When residents put items in recycling that are not acceptable, empty, or clean, it threatens the resale value of those materials. To respond to this, in 2019, sanitation worked to send over 15,000 letters to property owners about what items are collected. This year, sanitation is now leaving notes and stickers on bins that don't meet standards for pickup, for instance, bins that include things like styrofoam or greasy pizza boxes. As most of Bloomington's waste system is controlled by private haulers, 2020 will require partnerships for continued waste education and reduction measures to improve recycling and composting rates. A bright spot is our participation in composting. It's growing both internally among facilities and across the community. City now composts at four city locations through Green Camino, now known as Earth Keepers. In fact, across Monroe County in 2019, Green Camino is responsible for diverting 77 tons of compost from being sent to the landfill. 2019 was a watershed year for utilities. Bloomington made big investments in maintaining a safe, sufficient, and clean water supply. A year early, utilities began implementation of their Action Plan goal of installing smart meters, which are advanced water metering infrastructure. This was a $9 million investment that will be critical to better detecting and responding to inefficiency and leaks. More detailed water usage information for residents will also help consumers make more informed decisions about managing their own water consumption. Utilities is also actively working to reduce their electricity use in operations. In 2020, planned modernization improvements at the Dillon Plant will help reduce energy use and improve functionality. The city of Bloomington also made an investment in watershed management to ensure high-quality drinking water for years to come. Friends of Lake Monroe, with matching funds from the city, received a 319 water quality grant from the EPA, which will fund a watershed study to help keep our drinking water safe. Residents can also do their own part to help keep the watershed clean by applying for the 2020 Residential Stormwater Grant Program Open Now, which provides funding for installing rain gardens, bio swales, and detention ponds to slow water and filter pollutants at the source. Finally, ecosystem health. Parks and Recreation continue to lead in preserving and restoring healthy and vibrant ecosystems across our parks by conserving green space, restoring habitat, managing invasives, and planting native plants. A major achievement, Switchyard Park opening in 2019 as the largest park in city history, represents a new natural asset for the community, which can now enjoy 57 acres of parkland, and 640 new trees with 3,000 tree seedlings that will continue to mature. Parks is a nationally-recognized department, continuing to offering exceptional opportunities for volunteer engagement on invasive management, gardening, and other environmental programs, engaging over 400 volunteers last year. Parks is also active in education, holding events for over 1,700 students in places like Griffey Lake. Griffey Lake will also soon benefit from new trails funded through the bicentennial bond funding that will be enjoyed for years to come. As you can see, there has been rapid activity in 2019 to meet the city's sustainability actions with greatest impact. In 2020, we will continue to work towards improving community sustainability by aggressively reducing our impact and continuing to improve our capacity to respond to the impacts of climate change. The city is working to address the challenges the community has recognized, and will continue to strive towards managing our environmental, social, and economic resources to ensure a healthy and just society for current and future residents. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to working with you in 2020. We should have a bit of time left over for questions.
We do. We have about six and a half, seven minutes. So thank you for the presentation very much. I'll now open up the floor to questions from members for the report. Councilman Rallo.
May I make a statement? Is that permitted? Or is it just for questions?
I think a statement is okay.
I just, I want to say I appreciate all the work that you've done. I know you've been really dedicated and busy, and Mayor Hamilton, on the topic of sustainability and particularly climate. I just wanted to make a plug that I think that when I look at climate, I think of, you know, reducing CO2, but I also look at adaptation. And if we can do both at once, that yields even better benefits, and if it helps our local economy, that's even better. And so, the emphasis on local food, to me, I think I can't overemphasize it, because if we reduce, it's implicit that we reduce CO2 if we reduce energy costs and transport. And at the same time, we build resilience for the community if we provide local food for the community, and it has all of the economic benefits that are tied to that. And I know you've been working on that as well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rallo. Councilman Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation and for sending the slides ahead of time. The slides we got are a little more detailed, so that's great. Have some reading to do in the next few days. But just, I mean, it's so broad, and you have a lot of great information here and a lot of different initiatives that are going on this year. But just one thing that kind of caught my eye. In the category of climate mitigation and adaptation, there is an action of social equity trainings. And I think social equity is kind of the leg of the three-chared sustainability stool that often is overlooked. And I'm not sure how it fits in with climate mitigation and adaptation, but could you talk a little bit about the social equity references in the plan and how we might implement them?
Yeah, and I think this does relate to Councilman Rallo's comment, that oftentimes in sustainability, the social equity component is not always equally considered. So that particular goal was included, I think, in the climate section, just to make sure that we are adequately trained as an organization to make sure that we're always making decisions to make sure that we're continuing to serve underserved residents. So like Rallo mentioned, I think there's a nexus between things that help the environment, that help people, that help us to become more economically resilient, and that was identified in 2018 as something that we could work on improving, not just within our organization, but more broadly to make sure that it's continuing to be addressed. So it didn't happen last year. I'm part of a network of sustainability directors, and I think we'll be able to get additional support for training as to how to make sure that we are adequately considering that in the decisions we make.
Thank you.
Further questions for the Sustainability Report? I'll just ask, where was this photo taken?
Oh, that was near Griffey, so both pictures I took.
I mean, I'm sure there are tools to extract that image from a PDF, but if I were to circulate that, that's going to be my desktop background soon. I'd like to get a copy of that image if you would send it along to us.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send it to you.
Thanks again for the report, and to the department for its work, and to the Director of Innovation as well, and to the mayor. Thank you all for the report.
Do you want to leave the image out?
You know, I can think of worse things, but I think it's going to get moved off the screen. Okay, now we go to reports from council committees on items that are not the subject of legislation. Seeing none, we go to reports from the public at last. Again, who is here to report? All right, you'll have five minutes. Please go ahead and go podium and sign in after you speak. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, Greg Alexander. Just to blabber the obvious, parks are awesome. I love the Switchyard Park even, but they're not environmentally friendly by even the environmental damage that was done to build the Switchyard Park. My goodness. Anyways, also, if you guys are meeting behind closed doors with the mayor, you have to stop doing that. I don't know if that's true or not, but that would be a big problem, because he's engaged in a habit of acting unilaterally, behind closed doors, without consulting with the public, and then he expects you guys to rubber stamp it. And you guys don't want to have the appearance that you're negotiating behind closed doors with him, is kind of my impression. Anyways, that's not what I came to talk about. There was recently on Facebook, people have been discovering this bus route redesign, and every time there's a posting about it, a ton of people post their excuses for why they don't ride the bus. And, you know, I say excuses, that sounds prejudicial, so you decide. Here's one from, I'll just use her first name, Jenny. I don't know her. She says, this is verbatim, "Ridership is down because the sketchy surface makes it not worth it. I rode the bus for the first nine months I lived here, but my particular route had a special class break schedule that was different from the regular schedule, which meant that in the winter, in the dark and cold, I'd have to wait outside for an extra hour after work if I wanted a bus. And there are spots with no sidewalks between my work and my home, so walking wasn't an option. So I had to switch from riding a bus, which is better for the environment, to driving, which includes paying for parking, but at least this means I get to work on time and get to leave at the end of the day." So because we don't provide sidewalks, this woman changed from someone who was willing to ride the bus, to someone who's not willing to ride the bus. Now she has no choice, because there's no sidewalks. I've been telling you this. Everybody actually knows this, that's why they drive. And so she was someone who was willing to ride the bus, and now she's someone who's complaining that there's no parking. I don't know if you caught that transition, but people who are always complaining that there's no parking, that's not decreed by God. That's caused by this body systematically failing to provide sidewalks over a span of decades, consistently failing to provide sidewalks for decades. And so if we provided sidewalks, that same person wouldn't necessarily be complaining about parking. Anyways, while I'm on the subject of buses and sidewalks, there was some discussion, I think last week, about whether we can use TIF funds, or what funds we can use to build sidewalks. And I thought I should bring to your attention that there is a tremendous sidewalk gap one block south of the courthouse that is in a TIF district that you could use sidewalk funds to fix. It is between Third and Fourth Street on the west side of Walnut. There is no sidewalk between Third and Fourth Street on the west side of Walnut, one block south of the courthouse, between the courthouse and the bus station, less than half a block from the bus station. There is no sidewalk, huge sidewalk gap. And I know you guys have a lot of difficulty controlling the RDC, you know, you can't just spend TIF funds, per se. But TIF funds could be spent to fill in that sidewalk gap. Now unfortunately, that's not what's happened. What's happened is this body has authorized the TIF funds to be used. We spent $18 million last year to close that sidewalk. That sidewalk is at the parking garage, and they got a permit to close the sidewalk for more than a year to build that parking garage that you guys allocated $18 million for. I know, some of you guys are new. So we're going in the wrong direction. That is a huge sidewalk gap. If I have to explain to you why it's important to have sidewalks right by the courthouse, then I've already lost, I think. But instead of spending TIF money to make sidewalks better, we're making sidewalks worse. And the mayor, I would love to know if he's told you anything about this at the caucuses, but the mayor has decided that we're going to do the long road on this parking garage, so it will be another year, two years, of this sidewalk being closed if nothing is done. And you guys could just pass a resolution by voice. You could just introduce and pass a resolution by voice action tonight to say that this sidewalk should be reopened. I know that this is possible, because the Board of Public Works did it, to authorize that parking garage. They didn't put it on the agenda, they didn't announce it, they just introduced a resolution at a meeting and passed it at that same meeting. So if you're willing to do extraordinary measures to destroy sidewalks, could we please get that sidewalk back? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will now go to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any tonight? Seeing no appointments to boards and commissions, we'll go to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2003 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2003 to amend Title IV of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations Regarding Adding Chapter 4.32 Nonconsensual Towing Businesses. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance initiated in shape by the efforts of former council member Andy Ruff and former council member Dorothy Granger, amends Bloomington Municipal Code Title IV by adding a new chapter, 4.32, to provide for the licensing and regulation of towing companies that engage in the practice of nonconsensual tows. The ordinance includes provisions related to licensing requirements, insurance provisions related to licensing requirements, insurance coverage, signage requirements, fee limitations, and the retrieval of towed vehicles, among other provisions. The purpose of this ordinance is to increase community safety and protect residents from the harmful effects associated with predatory commercials private towing. The Committee of the Whole recommendations do pass 080.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-03 be adopted.
We have a motion, a second.
Mr. President, I move that the council suspend the rules to structure deliberations on ordinance 2003 such that members of the public may only speak for five minutes each on the ordinance. And that the total time spent on ordinance 2003 not exceed one hour.
Needs a second. It needs a second before we can entertain the motion.
Second.
We have a second. Can we get a sense of how many people are here to speak on ordinance 2003, the towing ordinance? One, two, three, four? So only a few people. I think five minutes will be fine. I was hoping to make it three, but, okay. Any discussion on the motion? The gist of it is that I anticipate that there's more, based on the meeting of the 22nd, that the council needs to gather in order to, and we'll hear tonight from some people who have some knowledge of it, I know, but I'm expecting that we'll refer it to an ad hoc committee to take it up. And with looser rules, there can be a back and forth discussion between all the parties who are interested in it. So I'm interested in seeing this particular issue not exceed one hour of total deliberation. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
We have a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to structure deliberations?
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bolen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
The ayes have it. So we will limit discussion to an hour. It will be done by 8:24. And so let's now go to a presentation of it. Mr. Sims?
Thank you. And Council Attorney Mr. Lucas is here to help us this evening. This ordinance was introduced on regular session on January 15th, and then the Committee of the Whole on the 22nd. And as a result of the feedback received at that meeting, and I will also say, I took up being sponsorship of this ordinance from Councilmember Ruff and Councilmember Granger. They are no longer here with us. And mainly because we had discussed it before, I think the majority of us have shown, have indicated that this is necessary. But I also am carrying that forward as a sponsor because I gave those council members, previous council members, my word to do so. And I think that's important. So as I was saying, we have worked since the January 22nd meeting, I have worked with staff on different ordinances, reviewing information that had been submitted by petitioners, by some of our council members and others. We also, this evening, at the suggestion of some members of the council during that 22nd, January 22nd meeting, council staff directly contacted and invited various organizations with potential interest in the legislation. And we invited them to review it and comment at tonight's regular session meeting. For an example, the organizations contacted include, to my knowledge, every towing company in Monroe County, the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Bloomington Incorporated, Monroe County Apartment Association, Indiana Legal Services, District 10 Probono Project, and the South Central Community Action Program. Now, some of the amendments that we have prepared this evening, and I will say that I don't anticipate that we'll get to them, since we have a pretty full agenda and we would like to use the time differently. But some of the agendas, amendments that we have prepared, one, it aligns, one would be to propose to align the towing and storage fees allowed under Bloomington Municipal Code 4.32.130, with those fees allowed by other local agencies. It also includes a new subsection under Bloomington Municipal Code 4.32.060 to provide the city discretion to refuse to renew a license for a company that has previous violations of the ordinance or has operated in a manner contrary to any federal, state, or local law. And we also have more of a housekeeping amendment referring to language in Bloomington Municipal Code 4.32.160B3, which changes the wording from the controller's office to the city. Now, at that January 22nd meeting, many council members expressed a desire for further consideration of the ordinance beyond tonight's meeting. It is possible that a motion will be made to refer the ordinance to further committee consideration to provide additional time for council members to get answers to questions and to prepare any other appropriate amendments. Such a referral could also provide a venue for a more direct conversation with stakeholders, including towing companies. I was on vacation when this was introduced or actually discussed on a January 22nd meeting. I have reviewed that information. I have had several conversations. So we are, we have a clear understanding, we believe, of where we're headed with this. We also, and I do acknowledge that there were many questions and some clarifications that we needed to take care of. And I do believe that with these amendments and with some of the other conversations and communications, that these three amendments, if we were to go there this evening or soon, would alleviate most of those concerns and make this palatable to move forward within our process. I will also add too, in addition to my commitment to my previous council members, one of the things when I try to do my legislative duties up here is I tend to try to look through everything through the lens of social justice, social equity, and non-discriminatory practices. And that is everything that we talk about. Now, we have a whole lot to do, but I think that component is important. I also believe, and I think many of us would agree, our community have, can be divided almost into a community of haves and have-nots with regard to local income streams. As we discuss this a little further this evening, this is not intended to, nor will it hinder any commerce of the tow companies affected by this. There will be some discussion on one of the changes. For an example, there's an inclusion or a potential inclusion of a proposed administrative fee of $25. One of the things in one of the discussions, and I hope I hear that this evening, is what does that administrative fee consist of from an itemized standpoint? I have no doubt that who brought it up, it may have merit. But if we are going to do the legislation, I think it's incumbent on us to ask for that to be itemized and broke down. So it may only be an additional fee of $12 that would cover the administrative fees, such things as potentially using electronic cards in order to pay for, you know, things like that. But it may not be $25. And I just don't want to blanket offer such an amendment if the actual cost to that particular company is less than the $25. So I'm hoping that will come out in the discussion or any comments that we have this evening and questions from my colleagues. And I also plan to, in the effect that we do not dispense with this this evening, I am prepared to offer a motion that this legislation be forwarded on to the Committee of the Whole as opposed to an ad hoc committee that has been discussed. And I'm sure we'll get to that. So, Mr. Lucas, did we, did I miss anything here? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. We'll now have a maximum 20-minute period for questions. I would ask my colleagues to try to keep it brief to make sure everyone has a chance to ask a question. Are there any questions from my colleagues to the sponsor? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, there was some confusion at our January 22nd meeting, at least from members of the public, as to whether this works in conjunction with state law or contradicts state law in some way. So I wonder if either Mr. Lucas or Mr. Rooker from our legal staff can address that.
Hi, Stephen Lucas, City Council staff. I have reviewed the ordinance thoroughly in conjunction with our legal department. We do not believe it conflicts with any provisions of state law. There was a new state law passed in the middle of 2019 that largely impacted this ordinance and is part of the reason that it wasn't completed before now. But we've reviewed both that law and previous state law thoroughly. This ordinance does include restrictions beyond those included in state law, which the city is allowed to do under its home rule authority. But we don't believe any provision conflicts with state law.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Further questions? From members on the ordinance? Seeing none, I guess it's time to go to the public. Oh, wait, we have a question from Mr. Flaherty.
Is it appropriate to ask questions related to amendments to the ordinance?
Yes, yes, it is.
Amendment number one mentions change the amount in Section 4.32.130A1 from $125 to $135 as the maximum fee allowed for the towing service itself. That excludes storage of vehicles and that sort of thing. I'm wondering specifically if we could talk about where the $135 number came from. At our meeting on January 22nd, January 22nd, there was a discussion that there is a difference in the business models between the contract towing that the city engages in, for which we pay a fee of $125, versus the type of towing that other businesses that work with local private entities engage in, whether it's due to patrolling or something like that, that there's just a different business model that might justify a different fee than what we had initially anticipated. So I'm just looking for greater clarity into who we spoke to and how we arrived at the $135 figure in this amendment.
I didn't mean to step on your toes, but the $135 is what one of the tow companies represented as the amount allowed by other public agencies, including Monroe County and IU. I did confirm that directly with those agencies that they allow towing companies to charge $135 and an additional $25 for an administrative fee. So that's where that amount came from as well. I think one of the questions that the council members had at the January 22nd meeting was, what are the differences for the towing companies' perspective of doing business for city-initiated tows versus these private tows? And I'd like to invite the tow companies to comment on that tonight or at any future meetings to help provide clarification for the council. One of the things we did recommend at the January 22nd meeting, both myself and the legal department, would be for the city-initiated towing prices, which are currently $125, to match those under this ordinance, both for ease of administration and for the public's point of view. If your car's towed, I don't know that it matters from the driver's perspective whether you're on the street or in a lot that you shouldn't be in. Charging different prices for those things doesn't, might not seem right. So the $135 is from what other agencies charge, and companies are free to comment more on that if they'd like to.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, we'll now go to the public. If you would like to speak about this issue, what I'd ask is, again, that you limit your comments to the potential problems that need to be addressed and what questions that whatever committee gets referred to, you know, set up the questions for that committee, which would take it up as early as next week. Please come to the podium, state your name. You'll have five minutes.
Jordan Evans. I am with the Monroe County Apartment Association. Our understanding is that the proposed ordinance will closely follow the state statute. The state statute requires a 24-hour notice to the owner of an abandoned vehicle before towing unless the vehicle interferes with the normal business operations of said business. We didn't see any clear definitions of abandoned vehicle or business interference in the state statute. We believe that our interests align to prevent future ambiguity, but we suggest that the following language be in the ordinance. If a parking lot is permitted, a vehicle parked there without a permit is deemed to interfere with business operations of the lot and may be towed without notice. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Further public comment? If you're here to speak about this, what we're going to talk about next week, please, now's your time. If people could line up so that we can expedite this, that would be helpful.
Sorry about that. My name is Jacob Padawan. I'm the owner of Tow Time Towing here in Bloomington.
If you could bring the mic a little closer to you.
Can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay. I wanted to touch base on a couple of things. The admin fee breakdown that you guys were asking about, administrative fee, I do believe that fee needs to cover quite a bit of what it takes to employ somebody for these type of tows. We are required to release by 24/7 standards, which means we have to staff somebody day and night for the releases themselves. I think it's important to get that off of the drivers. Right now, that's kind of how we solve our problem, is some of the drivers have to take up that responsibility because we can't even afford to pay somebody to do that. As far as the max pricing thing, that sitting at $135, I understand that that's with other municipalities and everything. I'm not so much, I guess, against that price as much as there has to be some way in the verbiage to change it for special occasions. One of the situations I recently ran into in the private lot sector of this is like a bank, when a bank, like they foreclosed on homes, right? The banks will foreclose on homes. They get contractors to clean them out. And for example, there'll be, the one I did had a boat, PT Cruiser, a bunch of stuff that was abandoned on the property for years, you know. And for me to remove those required about six hours of labor, winching them to the road, changing tires on the boat trailer to be able to pull it, you know, loading in a car that was full of spider webs, looked like it was made of cotton. I mean, it was just a lot of work, a lot of gross things to touch. It obviously had no plates on it anymore, things like that. And the extra things that I had to go through to figure out who owned the car, how to properly dispose of it, how to safely move it from that location to my shop, and then I got to store it. But there's, as far as like the winching and recovery of that car to get it to the road, because you can't take it, a 20,000-pound truck into somebody's front yard. So that, I guess we just had to find a way to word it to where, if there is some kind of circumstance like that, I'm not doing that for $135. So what I need to understand and what other people, other businesses, banks and stuff, when you run into a specific issue like that, are we stuck at $135? Because that's going to mean no company is going to take that on. And honestly, nobody came after those cars anyway, so I lost money on it. But the point is, if somebody would, if the car had the value, that I need to be able to charge what that, what that takes to do, you know, like the amounts that would make sense to me, I guess. I think that's really the only comments I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Did you take the pen? Okay. It fell on the ground there.
We'd ask people to sign in after they speak, so to expedite. We'd ask people to sign in after they speak, so to expedite matters.
Oh, okay. Hello, I'm Martin Potteet. Probably the biggest thing I would like to address is the misinformation, how the towing industry in this entire situation has been villainized. A quick example is last week's discussion on the vehicles that were disappearing, going to Indianapolis, charging $800, all of that. Due to the great work of the Bloomington Police Department, that was tracked down to individual criminals, a maintenance man who hired a towing company to move them and with their work solved that. It wasn't a towing company doing wrong, other than the fact they were working for a criminal, but that's not good. But to clear up most of the misinformation that is going on with this towing, it's been determined that it's highly necessary to protect the private property rights of the people within the city of Bloomington and to have their choice of who they hire, because it's a private industry, you ask the business model. The business model is hugely different. If you check into the state law, they add a clause, reasonable and customary to adopt the fee. Reasonable and customary would be assumed by surveying all the companies that do this and average their fee, not what a police agency tows, their fees, how them are restricted. Them are more set because we have the Constitution. When any police or a government agency takes someone's private property, you got to have due process, fairness, all of that. The business model for this type of towing, we end up, apartment complexes have tons and tons of vehicles and end up abandoned. When scrap value is very low, recovered, the fees are enormous in processing all of the legislative rules that are included in this. There is fees to run a national background check. This is required by state law. It's not even available to do. So as you pass this ordinance, being the state requires this, city of Bloomington police have the ability to do so, incorporate that into the ordinance so that state law can be followed. One of the other biggest conflict issues is massive wasted time of the Bloomington Police Department. So we definitely need to create ways to inform people quickly where their car is, signage that identifies ways of doing that. In the past, what would happen is your car disappears, people don't even read the sign, unfortunately, and when you, even with the police-initiated tows, instead of people just calling the police department to find out, they start calling towing companies. Our issue is, we don't know. We don't know. So then we send them over too, but that's our wasted time, and that's on something that's already happening, has ordinances, rules. So establishing ways to greatly reduce our officers' time. And then the other thing that happened is, Kenny from Westside described last week, is you call us when it's a private lot, the response is, I don't know, it's probably stolen. So then Bloomington Police Department has to get a report like that, and you got to investigate stolen vehicle, they got to call all the towing companies. It is, and this is highly frustrating to our officers from the ones, most of them highly professional, the ones we've worked with, some of them get frustrated, some of them take matters into their own hands, some don't follow the rules.
You've got one minute.
As I was informed earlier, this is going to go, hopefully, to another committee. I will end my time now, because that would give us a proper way to describe them issues. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further public comment?
I'll sign in here in a few minutes. Ken Parrish, Ken's Westside Towing. Keep it short and sweet. I just want to let you guys know I was here last time when it was introduced to the committee and all that. I am still super hopeful for this. I hope it goes through. I think it's a great idea. The city of Bloomington needs it very badly, in my opinion. I still think it needs a lot of work. I would hate to see that you guys would postpone this for a long time. I think a committee on the side to start one, have discussions, to try to resolve this sooner than later would be phenomenal. I know there's several of us that would volunteer our time and efforts to come in and help, not just myself, but property owners, other towing companies, so on and so forth, that can get this resolved. I'd also like to state again, real quick, about the payment. The prices on the tows, I think, is in conjunction with anything else that we're doing. I still don't like the no-pay issues. I think we need to fix our own henhouse problems on a lot of city-initiated tows currently, where we have to default this and we have to pursue legal obligation ourselves to get this money back when the customer comes in and refuses to pay. I can't tell you how much money that's involved, and/or attorney fees, court costs, so on and so forth, to try to get somebody to come pay a tow bill that the city of Bloomington had us remove and we have to release for free, although the city collects $25 to give them that release first. So the city collects their $25 for having to initiate paperwork, I don't get nothing as my towing company, even though I've done exactly what you guys have asked us to do by your rules completely. You guys are actually in this ordinance stating about 20% down and then making some kind of payment agreement on that. We don't even get that obligation on our city-initiated tows. And quite frankly, at 20%, most of the operators that are on your city towing, the operators of the truck, not the towing company, the operators get 30% on an average, okay? It's just an average. I'm not saying that's what everybody is. The driver gets 30%. So these towing companies are paying out 30% of what you guys delegate that we charge. We're already paying that out as payroll. And then for it to be okay that they come and pick up this car with no payment, now we have to go collect, that's more money out of our pockets right off the get-go. And I think 20% almost, in my opinion, is an insult to the towing companies in which you guys already have, if you would even allocate that. I think that cost should be more. And if you call around to other cities or check on other city ordinances around the country or around the state that, like Terre Haute, Fort Wayne, South Bend, cities that are equivalent to Bloomington, they don't get their cars released to them just because they don't want to pay. Those cities don't allow that to happen, okay? Interpretation of the law, I know you guys have heard from others, City Legal and all that stuff, and again, a lot of times law is interpretation. Indiana Towing and Wreckers Association, which I'm a member of, feels differently towards it. You just don't get your car picked up until the tow bill is satisfied. A lot of these towing companies, including myself, will discount, try to get something out of these people. We don't technically stand fast. If the car's been there for three weeks, well, as you guys know, we have fees we have to pay. If the car's left in our standards for 72 hours, we have to send out a 72-hour notice by law, okay? So these paperwork that we file on, again, cost us more money after it's set on our lot, because nobody knows who towed their car. These are fees we're paying to try to contact the owner, to let them know, hey, I have your car, this is why I have it. You know, we're spending this extra money, which actually isn't even in the contract that we've signed for the city of Bloomington. And most of us are okay with that. It's not an issue. The only time it becomes an issue is when we've sent these papers, we've sent all this, and now we're actually filing for a lien on an abandoned vehicle that's been set on our lot. We're now filing for this, and we've got a month worth of storage, and I know it's really quick and I apologize, but I really think these fees should be taken in consideration for all of us. These are costs of doing business. We have to have money to do what we do, and we do it not only for ourselves, but we do it for the community. Somebody has to remove these cars. It has to be done. The city can't afford to buy their own tow trucks and do on so forth. We try to do it as cheap and feasible as what you guys allowed us to do. We agree to your terms. You know, we do this under what you guys allocate to us to do. But at times, it feels, and I'm just being honest with you, it doesn't feel like you're actually on our side to help us. Here's this, but we're not going to stand behind you with everything that we do, and I know it costs to doing business, employees, payroll, all these things, you know, and we've talked several other times before about, you know, making a good payroll for these guys. Well, if I wouldn't, if I would hold my payments for these cars that don't pay me, my drivers wouldn't make very much money. They still get out of bed, they still go leave their families, they leave their dinner on the table, and they do this. Meanwhile, I still pay, and these other folks that get their cars towed in, don't. So as far as the committee, I really hope this goes through. I would really like to think that somebody would have a committee that where we could all sit down and speak, everybody, you know, get some better ideas, where we could spend more time asking more questions, to where you could get the proper answers from this side. Not only myself, but property owners, it's established and everything. Anyway, thank you, and everybody have a good night. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we come back to council for questions. Yes?
What I would like to do is offer BPD Officer Oldham a chance to speak if he would like to.
We do still have public comment time. He's welcome to.
No, okay. Okay, thank you. I just wondered. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Any follow-up questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I know this is just tangential, but it has been raised twice now by a member of the public that apparently the police department can order the towing company to release a car without having the person pay. And since we have an experienced ranking police officer here, Mr. Oldham, maybe you could tell us about this program, because it's the first I hear of it.
Good evening. I am Scott Oldham. I'm honored to be the operations captain for BPD. In answer to your question, for years, the, I guess the rule that we lived by was from the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office regarding non, I guess, entity tows, meaning there was no contract between the individuals whose car was towed and the owner of the vehicle and/or the tow service. That was working on a mechanic's lien. Last year, can't tell you the exact date, that law changed, so that law really is no longer in effect, and right now, we're kind of in another world as to what exactly we're talking about in that regard. For decades, we had gone by the rule that if you did not contract to have your vehicle towed, then if you provided name and information where you could later be served summons, the vehicle had to be returned to you. And again, that was on the advice of Monroe County Prosecutor and at that time, City Legal. That has now changed with implementation of a state law, which came to light late last year.
So it is no longer the policy of the Bloomington Police Department to order towing companies to release vehicles with no pay?
If they have been towed, that is correct. We do not order those released.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions on ordinance 2003? If not, it's time to entertain a motion as to what to do with this. Actually, we do have comment. I take it back. We will have up to 20 minutes for comment. We still have time. So if there's comment on the... No, 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 I'm bollocks myself. So please, Councilmember Sims. Well, this is actually, we're not in committee of the whole, so it's whoever speaks up first. Councilmember Sandberg?
I actually do have a question.
Okay.
I know this has been brought forward by councilmembers, and so our council staff has been working on this with both previous councilmembers and now Councilmember Sims. Who on the staff here in the city of Bloomington, whose full-time job it is to kind of monitor these kinds of things, is this a public works issue? Could anybody answer that, as to who from the staff could get involved with this, to meet with the different towing companies and BPD?
Well, certainly BPD and council staff have been involved, but we largely have seen it as a licensing issue with economic and sustainable development, but it touches on several departments, who would like to, and Legal, I guess, too.
We have been working with Legal to kind of craft a document that met the needs as we experience in the field daily, because while some of these issues are easy to work out at 2:00 in the afternoon, at 2:00 in the morning, those are not so easy to work out. So we need some guidance from the council as a whole as to what your decision is to kind of guide us in how we move forward.
Okay, so there really isn't staff whose responsibility it is to make sure we're getting the details and having additional meetings and...
There's been several meetings between the legal staff and the police department. I know they've brought other people in as well, from the community that they've spoken with. So I guess I'm not really sure, as far as the full-time staff, no, other than the full-time staff that works on other problems as well as this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I help?
We have a follow-up comment from the sponsor.
I was just wondering if I may help. I'm not sure if it was clear. The Department of Economic and Sustainability Development are the licensing agent, for lack of a better term. So as far as the licensee fee, the registrations, many of those requirements, such as the insurance, will be maintained by that office. And as the gentleman said earlier, the city would get $25 for that administrative fee, but it, like I said, it is itemized on what it is they do and how they follow up, how they have to store certain records. So I hope that answers it, that that's the city entity. I've been working with our council legal staff, as well as City Legal, and they have, of course, referred to BPD and other law enforcement agencies in the city, which is how we're kind of trying to align some of these fees, so that hopefully will lessen confusion.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I was a bit confused about what Captain Oldham was referring to when you said that you're working with the city and trying to get some guidance. Is that you were working with the city on this ordinance or on how to replace your former no-pay release program with something new? I'm a little confused.
Michael Rooker, city attorney, I think he was referring to the crafting of this particular ordinance, not to, but I suppose I should verify that. So yeah, to the crafting of this ordinance, that was a team that worked on it.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Further questions before we go to a motion of some kind? So, actually, we're still looking at the comment, so we'll start with Councilmember Sims.
Thank you, sir, for keeping me straight on this.
Thanks for keeping me straight.
I, first of all, just want to thank the public, and particularly some of our vendors that have brought up some issues. Many of these we've had, have anticipated, and I do believe that many of the things within this ordinance have addressed many of those concerns. Now, there's still some details, minor details to consider, but with regard to legality with state law, it has been thoroughly researched. There is this concept of home rule, and our attorney can explain that, but we feel we're, that this ordinance would be in compliance with state law and is in similar line to what has been instituted in the Indianapolis area on a similar ordinance. In the past, there has been confusion with folks who have had their vehicles towed and not knowing where. Part of this ordinance, again, addresses that with clearly defined signage at the entrances and exits with, and very clear with the numbers on where they can call to locate their vehicles, these sorts of things. I did hear that 20% down means we may not get the rest of our money. I think with the research, and there will be, I'm sure, occasionally some of those issues, but I think for the most part, and I'll give an example in just a second, most people who have their vehicles towed, I don't think that's an issue. This is meant to address the folks that cannot afford to do that. Again, I said earlier, this is a city of haves and have-nots, and sometimes, and we're not trying to begrudge the companies, and, you know, we'll do all we can to make sure that they get full compensation, but one of the problems that if, in fact, and also want to say, this is not an ordinance for people to park free and get away with anything scot-free. We just want it to be equitable and fair and transparent. But the great majority of folks will pay the fee for their car because they were illegally parked and legally towed. So I understand that concept, but I wouldn't think that there'd be the great majority of folks who want to get their car would try to abscond with the difference. There are some examples that was brought up that I don't think this ordinance is going to particularly address. The example, one that's, the car was abandoned, full of spider webs, debris, and this, that, and the other. The example, one that's, the car was abandoned, full of spider webs, debris, and this, that, and the other. If this is an owner of that lot initiated tow as part of the agent, then those fees matter, or is what we go by. Now, if this vehicle's been sitting, I think you said for months or something like that, well, then that's a deal between the owner and the tow company. And you know, that's really not part of this ordinance. That is an abandoned vehicle. And I think that's, and legal, you can correct me on this, but I think that's a different thing. And I would want you to get compensated. If it take you six hours to load up a car, and you know, who would do that for 100, 150 bucks? I mean, I understand that, but that's something else I think that's outside the realm of this ordinance. Thank you. We don't want tow companies to be villainized. Good businesses in this town. And I don't think that the 20% has to do with folks who don't want to pay, or cause them not to want to pay. Again, my, I want us to consider what about the people who cannot pay that full amount? Okay, and sometimes that amount on that tow bill is the difference between maybe medicine for their kids, paying a utility bill. And I don't want that to say that we don't, tow companies just take your licks and move on. That is not the intent for this. I think we have a really good relationship with all the tow companies in this town, at least that I'm aware of, and we want to maintain those. And I think everything else that we can address through any amendments or what we've built into this ordinance that has been vetted by legal through our council folks, through public comments. And I anticipate that there will be at least one more discussion where we can dig a little deeper to make sure that it's fair and equitable and acceptable for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other debate on the ordinance before we entertain a motion? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do need, you know, more discussion on this. One thing that stands out, and I just thought of due to Councilmember Sims' comments, is that currently in the ordinance, you don't have to show hardship to get the payment of 20% down and a payment agreement to pay the rest. I mean, anybody can just do that. So, and we know that a payment agreement is sometimes hard to enforce. So even though the intention, the intent of that is good to say, okay, some people really cannot pay $135. I understand that, but some people may just not want to pay $135. You know, maybe graduating, leaving town, and they really don't care. And so they could just sign, say, 20%. So I don't know if maybe we could, we could add something, at least they have to attest that it's a financial hardship, something, I don't know. But that's just one of the many outstanding questions as to the details of this ordinance, which I think is fundamentally sound, but just needs more detail work. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate on ordinance 2003? I will take an opportunity to say that I've heard a lot of things tonight that I think need work. We need a clear definition of abandoned vehicles. We need a breakdown of what the administrative fee is for. Tow companies are concerned about how they pay their drivers, special occasion pricing, a single hotline for towed cars. That 20% that de facto payment is too low. These are all structural problems with the existing law and perhaps the ordinance that need work. And my particular concern here is not about the ordinance, but how we take it up. We don't have any mechanism in the committee of the whole to really have the kind of back and forth that we need. While theoretically, we could do that in committee with all nine members here. It appears like the formal meeting we're having right now. And this really needs to be sort of a sensitive conversation with all stakeholders at the table and maybe even at a table instead of the dais back and forth like this. But we need the tow companies, we need the apartments, we need economic and sustainable development, we need somebody from the police. We need just whoever can clarify, A, these problems, and B, the most sensitive solutions to them that will make it work. So, you know, my preference in the motion I will make tonight, if I get the opportunity, is to refer this to an ad hoc committee of four members. I would recommend Councilmembers Rallo, Scambaluri, who did I have? Piedmont Smith, and chaired by Councilmember Flaherty. That would, to refer to an ad hoc committee would trigger the two-meeting opportunity that they would have a chance to meet on February 12th, and if they saw fit to and needed to, February 26th. I foresee that the discussion that would happen next week, no matter who hears it, is going to be a couple of hours of clarifying ideas and determining what amendments we need to write. And then having two weeks to write those amendments and have the committee hear them again on the 26th. And then final act, we'll come back to the full council on March 4th. This is what the committee system triggers. It allows that committee to have a second meeting, whereas the committee of the whole cannot extend itself. We'd have to send that to a meeting on the 12th. They'd have to send it back to us on the 19th. If we need another two weeks, we'd have to same process again, just to write the amendments. Otherwise, we're writing the amendments in a hurry, and Councilmember Sims has already spent a lot of time developing this. There's no sense in rushing it. We want to get it right. So to that end, that's the motion I want to see. Councilmember Sims would prefer the committee of the whole. We have competing motions. I would ask that no matter which motion comes first, that both of them be considered. If one is defeated, the other option is the other reference to a committee. That's what I have to say. At this point, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Sims? We have another question. Oh, so I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Councilmember Piedmont Smith? You've both already spoken. If there's...
I have a question for you.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if this is, the motion has not been made, but I wonder why your ad hoc committee does not include the sponsor of the legislation?
He's presenting it. It was not intended to be a slight to the, I have a great deal of respect for the sponsor. I figured he'd want to present it rather than be on the committee that heard it. But, you know, I'm open to swapping them out. Councilmember Sims?
Is it my turn to comment?
Yes, yes.
Good question, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. I was thinking that myself. But one of the things that I want to be clear about is that I'm not so sure that I appreciate the characterization that every car that is legally towed from being illegally parked is... I don't want them painted with the same brush that everyone has no intentions of paying their legal debt. There are some folks that will not be able to, at least initially, and I think we are well aware of that. I still think, as of now, most people are going to pay their bill in full. And I haven't heard any type of evidence that 60% of those folks don't pay the bill. I don't think it's, there may be a few, and I don't want to micromanage any business. I just want everyone to be compensated fairly and taken care of. One of the other things, and we've all heard, and I'll be brief. One of the things we've all heard, horror stories of folks getting their cars towed, and most of them are legit. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say we're the bad people because we're doing it. There's rules, and we're trying to highlight those. But as an example, and this did not hurt this person, this person happened to be a retired IU professor and can afford to do that without impunity, but here's the example. And I do not cite other reports because I can't confirm them. This one I can. Sunday morning, she went to church service, parked in a close-by lot, clearly marked illegal. So that is not our issue, clearly marked illegal, probably should have been towed based on our rules and ordinances. Leave church, see that her vehicle is gone. One of our members, they called a number, say, here's your car. Within the hour, she is there to retrieve her vehicle and was charged $230. Okay, now, after some negotiation and this and that, they settled on $200. That, to me, is the definition of predatory towing that affects some of the folks that could ill, that can most non-equipped to do that. She could, you know, there's many of us that can pay the $200, whether I like it or not, if that's what you charge. But you would still get the fee that we set that we think is fee if it's approved. And I think we can just move on, so. And I do appreciate all input and comments that we've heard this evening. And if it's proper, and I know you've mentioned about these motions, I don't know if I'm allowed to offer a motion, or...
You are.
How would you like to handle that, sir?
Well, I mean, as a president, I need to defer to other members to offer first, so if you would please make the motion.
Dear Mr. President, I move that the council refer ordinance 20-03 to the committee of the whole to meet on February 12th, and if necessary, February 26th, to consider and report back on the legislation. Do I need to?
Motion in a second. Any questions for the maker of the motion? Councilmember Flaherty?
Next question for Councilmember Sims and also Council President Volan. Is it possible, first, to refer to committee of the whole in two meetings, February 12th and 26th? Or is this something that you hinted at, that if we do not come to a conclusion on the 12th that we feel like we'll be able to handle in a third reading? Rather, in a third reading, we'll have to refer to committee of the whole again on the 26th and...
It was not proper. I mean, it would require a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules. I mean, it would be, the rules, the committee of the whole cannot extend itself. It meets as a courtesy to the council, and it's all nine members, but I would defer to Mr. Sherman.
Yes, your right to... This is the best way, if you want to allow the committee of the whole to take it up on two occasions rather than one, make it a motion from the council at a regular session or special session.
I'm sorry I didn't follow that. What's, that's where we're at right now?
I know. That's how you do it. That's the best way to have the committee of the whole here.
But to require a two-thirds vote to approve, to give it a second reading. Otherwise, it's supposed to come back to regular session, then it can be recommitted to the committee of the whole once again. Okay.
So by a two-thirds vote of council tonight, we could refer it to committee of the whole for two meetings, potentially?
Yes.
12th and the 26th?
You may not need two-thirds vote, but I think it might be a majority.
Can you confirm it? Because I think that makes a difference. Can you confirm that? That's not in my experience.
I think it must be seconded, is debatable and amendable, and needs a simple majority to pass. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Yeah, that's literally never my understanding of committee of the whole.
Let me just clarify that that draft motion was contemplating both possibilities. So I don't know that the two dates necessarily, when we crafted that draft motion, the two dates were applicable to the committee of the whole. I think it was contemplating the competing motion to refer it to this ad hoc committee that could meet on the 12th and the other date.
Yeah, I mean, city code says committee of the whole cannot extend itself.
But if we...
We'd have to suspend that. We'd have to have, be a two, this should be a two-thirds...
It's going to be two meetings, then?
Right, but it still requires a two-thirds majority.
It'd be two, is it proper? Two meetings, one's committee, the next is legislative action, which is what's going to happen anyway.
That's related...
In theory, and I anticipate one more meeting for details, and then we're ready. And it'll either, it'll either fail or it'll pass.
Okay, that relates to my second question, which I think you've now addressed, which is basically, how do you, Mr. Sims, or Councilmember Sims, see the crafting of amendments and the sort of conversation with relevant stakeholders happening? Would there be invitees to a work session ahead of time, email communications between staff and stakeholders? Would this all take place at the committee of the whole and then come back to us for action at a regular session? What is your anticipation?
I think as we have been doing is that our council legal folks have been clearly communicating with all council members with all updates and necessary information. So I don't anticipate any changes with how we've communicated and sharing that with everyone. I don't think it'll require a work session schedule. In fact, and it's just me, I really think that one more meeting is sufficient. I think we're close enough that we can move forward. And part of the issue with this and moving it around is that we have such a full council agenda schedule. I think, and I do not want to minimize this, its importance, but we've got a lot of important stuff to go, and I don't want this to drag along. And as one of our public commentators say, let's get this done, and the sooner the better, as long as it's fair and equitable to everyone. And again, recalling the lens at which I look through things, I think that would be my preference.
On the motion now?
We're still in questions for the motion. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, my question is, in a committee of the whole, can the format be a roundtable with a discussion? Or does it have to be the typical council sits up here and public just comments?
The council can do whatever it wants. Mr. Sherman?
What do you want to do if you want to be, have a typical on-camera? If you want to do it on-camera, we've done tables in the middle of this room. You could do that. Just work through the president, and we'll make sure that the room is configured as you wish. I think that you're allowed to, that there's no prohibition against referring matters to the committee of the whole, so I do not think you need a two-thirds majority. At this meeting, you can say, kick it back to the committee of the whole and also the next two committees of the whole. You can do that as a, at a regular session by a simple majority. That's my take on the vote required.
Further questions? You made the motion. Did you have a question? Any other questions? Okay, any comments on the motion before we vote on it? I have one, if no one else does. Okay. This has been exactly my point. First of all, if tow companies are being villainized, it's because the towing law is inadequate to prevent that perception. Everyone agrees we need to address these problems sensitively. The committee of the whole is not a sensitive instrument. It's all nine members here. It's formal. We've always treated it formally. We've never had rules. We've never adopted rules, for example, the limiting of comment. We will have to do that as well, and that's done in regular session, not in, during the committee of the whole. The, the, all nine members here, why do all nine members be the, you'll have a chance. All nine members, okay, I know you want to talk. All nine members are here. It leads to more talk, and we're trying to limit the amount of time. There's going to be a PUD on the 12th and 26th, the Trinitas PUD. So, and staff has been eager to, planning staff is eager to have those meetings at the beginning. So we're already looking at a committee of the whole around 8:00 PM. There needs to be a lot of back and forth. A lot of people need to be there. And Councilmember Sims' motion compresses the time. If he believes it only needs one more meeting, I disagree with him. I think it needs two. I think that we need to just have that conversation with all the players to figure out what the amendments need to be. I don't know if they're going to be written by then, but they should be discussed in public first and then written. And we don't need everybody here to do it, okay? I certainly am not volunteering to be on the committee. I will serve if people would prefer me to. But I think I am doing enough for the council as it is. Four members is plenty. It's, we have this mechanism in code, too. I would urge everyone to let it, let it go to an ad hoc committee, which automatically has a second meeting. We don't have to do anything special to go to a second hearing for the committee. Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I think one meeting would be plenty. Before we got here tonight, there was anticipation such that we deliberated to change the structure of this meeting because we anticipated so many folks to have public comments, and that did not work itself out. So I am not saying that it won't happen, but I see no reason why we need to anticipate something like that in the future. We are very close to where we need to be. One of the things with myself and some of the other council members have been involved, and so has our legal folks, both legal, our city legal and our council legal. I have gotten emails directly from some tow company owners. They have expressed their concerns. We have kind of communicated back. Some of these amendments reflect some of those concerns. And I think that we will continue to do that. I read a list earlier at the beginning of this of all the folks that we have invited. I read a list earlier at the beginning of this of all the folks that we have invited that are stakeholders here. And everyone, it's posted, so we've had a chance to review all that, and this is the comment we got. I'm happy to get it, but it was nothing near what we anticipated, and I have no real reason to think that we'll be totally bombarded as we move forward. Again, I will repeat, I think we're very, very close to settling, working through this. And then I'll shut up and let Councilmember Sandberg speak.
Councilmember Sandberg?
My question about who on the staff is responsible to assist this council in making decisions like this is that I think if there needs to be a more informal meeting around a table with the stakeholders, with BPD, with Economic and Sustainable Development, whoever legal we need to get, that's the meeting I was hoping to have, not to have us do additional work through ad hoc or whatever committees. It's one of my reasons for opposing the whole standing committee system to begin with is I want to make sure that this is properly vetted, that everything is, you know, worked out to the satisfaction of all the stakeholders here, but I'm not sure that's our job up here. I think I would depend more on the professional staff to work things out, make recommendations back to us for a Committee of the Whole discussion or a regular session, vote something up or vote something down. The additional work that's being created here, in my mind, is a little bit cumbersome, and of course, we all want to get to clarity, but I'm relying more on our professional staff after we've heard all the concerns, tweak this, get it back to us in a way that, that the sponsor of this legislation is comfortable with, and then we take it, take it up there as a body of the whole, all nine of us, not just a few of us. Thank you.
That reflects one hour, so we are, I will allow Councilmember Piedmont Smith to have the final say, and then we must vote on the motion.
Yes, I disagree with Councilmember Sandberg. I think that standing committees, if they'd been in place, would have been the ideal way to handle this legislation. This is legislation that originated with council members, not with the administration. A standing committee could have held hearings around a table, had all the stakeholders and city staff involved before writing the legislation, could have avoided kind of a half or three-quarters of the way baked cake being presented to us on January 22nd. That's what standing committees are for, to specialize in certain areas and to take public input, stakeholder input, and draft legislation. I think that if we had had the standing committees, a standing committee on transportation or on sustainable and economic development could have taken this up and been much more efficient with it. I think that at this point, you know, it's fine. We've already heard it in Committee of the Whole, let's hear it again in Committee of the Whole. I'm not going to, you know, go to bat for that, but I think this, this issue really makes the case for standing committees.
With that, we must conclude. We're out of time. Sorry, we need to get to the next thing. We limited this to an hour.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the table. Okay, we'll have a roll call. The motion to recommit to Committee of the Whole.
For the two meetings?
I still think that this goes against code.
Motion is for one meeting?
Motion is for one meeting.
So come back on the 19th, in other words?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually...
I think the motion is there if necessary.
Actually, the motion said if necessary.
But we only anticipate.
Question, quick question. Councilmember Scambleri?
My understanding is that if we convene as Committee of the Whole, we are free to format that meeting as we choose. So if we wanted to have a dialogue rather than a more formal dais thing, we could do that, correct?
Certainly, yes.
All right, do we need, would we need to document that in any special way in the context of this motion, or do we just do it?
I think we can take the lead from, we will go through the president of the council and arrange the room accordingly.
We can arrange that.
Great, thank you.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
No.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambleri?
Yes.
The vote is seven to two. We will recommit to Committee of the Whole on February the 12th, and we will make arrangements for how the meeting will be conducted between now and then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the next item.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2001 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Needs a second.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2001, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 3.2 acre property from Commercial Limited to a planned unit development and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 105 South Pete Ellis Drive, Curry Urban Properties petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2001 would rezone a 3.2 acre property from Commercial Limited to a planned unit development and approve a PUD district ordinance and preliminary plan to allow the construction of a mixed use building. Land Use Committee recommendation is due pass 400.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2001 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion to second. Here to present is Jackie Scanlon from...
I have a motion about how to structure deliberations.
I forgot about that. Yes, please go ahead.
I move that the council suspend the rules to structure deliberations on ordinance 2001 in the following manner. There will be a presentation of the proposal by planning and transportation staff and the petitioner. These shall be limited to 10 minutes for staff and 10 minutes for the petitioner. Council members may then ask questions and receive answers. These shall be limited to three minutes per council member, which includes the response, and is further limited to a total of 30 minutes. The council will then consider any reasonable conditions. For each reasonable condition, there will be a presentation by the sponsor, which will be limited to three minutes. Then council members may ask questions and receive answers. These shall be limited to two minutes per council members, which includes response, and is further limited to a total of 10 minutes. Then members from the public will have an opportunity to speak to the reasonable condition once and for no more than two minutes each. Then the council members may follow up with another round of questions subject to the above restrictions. Lastly, the council members may comment before voting on each reasonable condition. When commenting, council members are limited to two minutes per reasonable condition. Then, upon consideration of the final reasonable condition, council members may ask questions and receive answers, limited to two minutes per council member, and further limited to a total of 10 minutes. Then members from the public will have an opportunity to speak to the proposal once and for no more than two minutes. So this is on the overall revised proposal. Then the council members may follow up with another round of questions subject to the restrictions as above. And then lastly, the council members may comment before voting on the proposal as modified by the reasonable conditions. And when commenting, council members are limited to three minutes per member and no more than 30 minutes total. And finally, a motion to extend the time will require a supermajority vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? I'll simply say it's our goal to get out of here at a reasonable hour. We've got about two and a half hours left, so we, I hope that this will make sure of that. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I think a voice vote is okay if we want to take a voice vote. Mr. Sherman?
It's a suspension of the rules.
So we need to roll a call vote?
Yep. Call a question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Sims?
Out of the room.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
It's out of the room.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
You skipped one.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Scambleri?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
That's a seven oh vote, so the motion is adopted. We are now ready to present. I will just combine the 10 minutes and 10 minutes into one 20-minute period. Go right ahead.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we are discussing PUD 3419. The property is located at the corner of Pete Ellis and Longview with 7th Street on the west side. This is on the east side of town. You can see here in the location map. The property is 3.2 acres, currently zoned Commercial Limited. The comprehensive plan designation has this property at the southeast corner of the Regional Activity Center for the new hospital location and part of that focus area, and it's currently undeveloped. The PUD proposal before you is a preliminary plan and district ordinance to rezone the property to a planned unit development, and this planned unit development would include one four-story building that would contain roughly 19,000 square feet of commercial space. It would also contain multifamily with 264 units and 344 beds. The bed makeup would be a combination of studios, ones and twos, and I believe a third of those units would be two bedrooms. The petitioner is proposing 306 onsite parking spaces and 15 on-street parking spaces back in only would be designed for Pete Ellis. The property, because the property is smaller than five acres, it requires a waiver for approval. The proposed uses on the site include those uses allowed in Commercial Limited, adding the use dwelling multifamily so that units could be placed on the first floor at the location, and removing a square footage limitation on allowed retail in the district. Development standards proposed include a maximum of 30 units per acre. They are proposing 29 in this current design. They would use Commercial Limited architectural standards, accepting some of the modulation requirements for first-floor commercial, which they have replaced with other modulation but not meeting the exact existing UDO standards. Some, some of the other relevant data is setback from the north property line would be a minimum of 15 feet for the majority of the building, and the CL setback is seven feet, so double the, double the existing requirement. And then the setbacks along the three frontages vary. The petitioner is planning 34% open space, and again, four stories with a maximum height of 57 feet. Currently, the Commercial Limited density allowed is 15 units per acre, and again, this site is proposing 30 as their district ordinance with the actual design of this building being 29. We have 306 parking spaces designed in the center of the building, in a parking garage in the middle module with 346 beds. That's .88 parking spaces per bedroom. Some of that parking, though, should be allotted for the 19,000 square foot of commercial space in Woodby, which gives us an actual ratio of .71. So these are the conceptual site plans. Again, tonight, you are actually approving a zoning ordinance, not a site plan, but because this is one parcel, we often receive a lot more detail, and that is why this appears to be a site plan. So you can see there are two open areas to the building. The one on the left would be for residents, and the one on the right would be for residents and tenants of the commercial space with some other outdoor areas programmed in the northwest and southwest corners of the property. So they did, were able to provide renderings. So this is the southeast elevation. So when you're looking to the right, that is Pete Ellis. You can see some of the, the design that is planned for the site, which includes these on-building cisterns, which is part of the stormwater management planned, that has been planned thus far for the location. And then this street here is Longview. This is 7th Street to your left with Longview to your right, and some of you may remember that this, a similar petition to this came forward previously, and the council did not hear that petition. One of the large changes architecturally from that petition was that that, this corner, this was the previous corner, which read obviously as five stories at the corner. 14 beds and 14 units were removed, and the site was redesigned because this is the lowest location on the lot. So these are actually basement units that, that this building could still read as four at this location with an open terrace on top. And this module immediately adjacent to the corner, excuse me, was pushed back to make room for open area, pocket park area, and less, a less kind of heavy experience for pedestrians, which was a large concern of staff the first time around this location. So these are the elevations. We actually received some information from the petitioner today that the northern elevation has been tweaked a little bit, so we can, we have that data, and they can go over that with you as well. But this is the Pete Ellis Drive, which you saw in the first rendering, and the Longview Drive here, again, with the parking garage in the center. And then we have the 7th Street elevation here with the corner that was amended, located on the right, and the north elevation, which I will show again, has changed. So as I mentioned, this is in the corner of the edge of a focus area here related to the new IU Campus Hospital, and you can see that here with the red square of the petition site. So we've included the floor plans, if you'd like to discuss those. Again, not necessarily approving an exact site plan, but approving a set of guidelines for a site plan that this building needs. So the PUD district intent comes from 2004-010, and the department concluded that the proposed PUD does offer a unique architectural design, especially in this area, and a range of benefits and features for tenants. Additionally, the plan offers diverse housing and obviously the needed addition to housing stock in general, which is a clear desire of the comprehensive plan. The petitioner is proposing onsite workforce housing units with 10% of the beds being available for a maximum, to a maximum of 100% of area median income, and 5% of the beds at a maximum of 120%. So that is a 99-year agreement for onsite units. So that, that's great. That's what we have been working toward with other locations, so they have agreed to do that. The petition did receive a favorable recommendation from Plan Commission, and we had seven conditions that came out of that. They also recommended waiver of the five-acre minimum. Some of these are our typical, some typical conditions that we include, including delegation of the final plan approval to PNT department staff, receiving encroachment agreements from Board of Public Works before grading permit issuance, the recording of their workforce housing commitment, and other things related to Board of Public Works. And we put in as well that they will submit a traffic study with the application for their final plan approval, and that we will receive more information about what lead compliant practices they have planned. So this petition went to Land Use Committee for the first time on January 15th. The five main issues that came out of that, that hearing were questions about plan for a bike path, requests for a shadow study, more information on bike parking, questions about traffic, especially at Pete Ellis and Longview, and information about greenhouse gas reduction. So the petitioner was able to supply some of that, which I think was, answers were in your packet, and the petitioner is here tonight as well. I did include two images from the shadow study. So this building is the by right building allowed in CL, and you can see the neighboring property to the north, the apartment building immediately to the north here. And so this would be the effect of a by right building on that structure, and then this is the effect of the proposal on that structure as well. So that was discussed at the January 29th Land Use Committee. And then we received these elevations today. As I mentioned, the petitioner can describe these in more detail, but basically, this is the northern elevation here. There have been some changes made since Land Use Committee in these pockets here, one, two, three, and four, where they were further recessed than had previously been, and you can see the cutout here in this design showing where that lines up on the building and that those areas would be recessed to provide more separation from the property to the north. So the Land Use Committee also recommended approval to common council with a vote of four to zero. Reasonable conditions were discussed at the hearing, none specifically were, were voted on at that time, but I know, I believe you have received some today that I'm happy to discuss as well. And I think that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Let's hear, so let's hear now from the petitioner. You'll have 10 more minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Curry. I'm the petitioner. I wanted to thank you all. This has been a long time coming, and, and we and my team have been working on this for almost two years now. So I'm very excited to be here tonight, even though it's late. With me, I have Al Lupton, the chief architect of the building, and I have Steve Brehop, with Smith-Brehop Civil Engineering Firm. Many of you know him, and we hope that we can address your questions and... can address your questions and, and put your minded ease over any issues that you might have. So again, thank you, and we look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Okay, we've come in early, just over 10 minutes. So now it's time for council questions on the project as a whole before we get into reasonable conditions. Are there any questions? Oh, wait, first we have to hear the report from the Land Use Committee. Will the chair please report?
Yes, I'm very sorry, I forgot to mention this when I proposed how to structure the debate, but we do need a brief report from the Land Use Committee to our colleagues that are not on the Land Use Committee. So this was in the council packet, but, and some of it has been covered by Ms. Scanlon's report. There were concerns about stormwater drainage, which were addressed by engineers both for the petitioner and through the city staff that assured us that the drainage would not be any more than previously according to state law, that has to be the case. And then there were concerns about traffic and the fact that there was no recent traffic study done. There were some questions about bike lanes on Pete Ellis and on how the, how the transportation plan might dictate certain pedestrian and bicycle facilities in this area. We talked about parking, we talked about screening the parking garage. We were interested in more specifics about the green building features, and there were concerns about sound and light pollution from the exterior amenities. There's an amphitheater in the northwest corner of the site proposed, and there were some concerns about how that would be used. And there was, not in the, I don't think it's in the final proposal, but previous hearings indicated that the developer wanted to have a, a large screen movie viewing opportunity for people in this residential complex, and so there were some concerns about sound and light coming from that. So these concerns led us to propose the reasonable conditions that we will hear tonight. I will not rattle them off now since we will take them one at a time. I just did want to say that if you, if you look at the report, reasonable, the ideas for reasonable conditions, the first and second one have been combined into one, and reasonable condition number nine has been dropped because it's already city code to maintain pedestrian access around a construction site, although I believe that we can do and should do a better job in enforcing those rules, but we did not feel the need to actually propose that as a condition as it's already required. So that's my report. We voted four to zero on January 29th with the understanding that we would have reasonable conditions attached to this proposal.
Thank you for the report. Are there questions for the project as a whole from council members? Councilmember Smith?
Hi, Mr. Curry. We had, we've had some meetings with District III residents that are right there by, by the development. And so one of the, one of, you know, broader sense, the question is, how do, how do you think that this impacts the quality of life in the neighborhood? And I guess people were concerned about, you know, the traffic and the size and, and commotion that it may disrupt the Cambridge Square residents. So I think it's, your building looks great. It's really a nice, many nice features in it. So don't, don't take this as that I'm a naysayer, but the residents have, people in the neighborhood, they have some concerns that it's going to negatively affect their quality of life. So if you'd like to kind of respond to that so that they get a sense of how you feel about that, or any mitigating factors, and I'm new at this, so pardon me if, if I ask it in an improper way.
Thank you. I don't take offense to your comments, and I appreciate the fact that you liked the building design. I, I've opened myself up and dealt with the neighbors, however you want to categorize that, wherever, you know, near and by, and some of them are sitting here, and I think that we've had very good conversations. In my opinion, they've been very positive. I've addressed their concerns. I don't see this building being a negative, or having a negative impact on the nearby community. I see it as having a positive impact. Number one, we're not doing a student-oriented development, okay? So by the sheer fact of doing the size of the units, the studios and the one-bedrooms, which are the general makeup of the, the density, we're attracting a certain, hopefully trying to attract a certain type of, of young professional or people that want to be in that area and live in a nice building. But the positive impacts are, you know, where we are in this infill lot, you know, it's, it's attractive to many places nearby, and we're promoting walking, we're promoting bus routes, we're promoting bike routes, and I, I think that that increases the quality of life because people can have the choice to go out and get to their destination by walking or riding, other means than a car. And just by the sheer building materials and the amount of, the emphasis we've put on just the architectural design, I think is going to increase, not increase, it will not negatively impact anyone's quality of life. This will be the nicest building anywhere, anywhere close to that area. If you know the area, you know, there's some aging structures out there. We also are going after, in the 19,000 or 20,000 square feet of commercial space that we have, on, on a single-use tenant. So hopefully, that would be medical-oriented in some way, shape, or form. Is my time up?
That's your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question from council members on the project as a whole. Seeing none, it's time to go to reasonable conditions. This may go faster than we expected. Who has the first condition to present?
Mr. President? I move reasonable condition one to ordinance 2001.
Needs a second.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So this reasonable condition is intended to address concerns about noise and light pollution affecting the neighbors by, one, prohibiting the use of sound amplification that can be heard beyond the site in violation of Bloomington Municipal Code 1409, which is our noise control ordinance, and, two, prohibiting light trespass or glare beyond the site in violation of the newly adopted but not yet implemented UDO. So that is basically what it says. I'm open to questions.
Questions for Councilmember Piedmont Smith about reasonable condition one. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I would just like a little clarification on point number two, and what does that look like? Prohibiting light trespass or glare beyond the site? What is, what is your, the vision for that? I think I understand, I just want to be sure.
So...
Is this worth a, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's, in, in the UDO, there is a section on lighting, and there is, there are rules about light from a site cannot project more than, I don't know, one candle foot, something...
So yes, so there's a maximum number of foot candles.
And it's the downlighting and all that that we talk, okay. I'm clearing that then, thank you. Just want to make sure, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Smith?
How is the, how is the light pollution mitigated? Or how might it be?
It's, maybe Ms. Scanlon can talk about the section in the UDO about lighting?
Sure. So I think that this, and Ms. Piedmont Smith can correct me if I'm wrong, is trying to, so you can see here on the screen, there's an outdoor amphitheater designed for this area. There's also been some discussion of movie viewing, I believe, in this area, trying to reference the portions of the code that would minimize the adverse effects on the immediate neighbors, including lighting. So we have lighting standards that don't allow for certain amounts of light to cross over a property line, and we would, if a neighbor said, hey, there's, they're, you know, having a program out there and it's shining into my lights, we would go and measure and see if it meets the requirements.
So the individuals in Cam, in, at Cambridge Square, if they said, oh, it's, it's really light?
They could call us, and we would check and make sure it met code, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions on reasonable condition one? I'll take a crack at it. The noise control ordinance has been, since it was made more stringent several years ago, it seems to have been quite a bit more successful. Can you characterize very briefly the, like, how the noise control ordinance would be enforced in this case? Like, what, I mean, the, the concerns the neighbors had about sound projecting from the building, like, how does that enforcement action work?
So, yes, so that is, the noise control ordinance is not enforced by planning transportation? That's, they would call the police, and they would come out, and then, and I don't know the exact rules of what the, what is allowed to occur there, but they would make sure it was within the bounds of code.
Well, there is, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, a $50 first fine, $100 second fine, $500 third fine, but it's a multifamily building, so would the fine be assessed to the building owner?
I don't know. We are not involved in that at all. That's not something we looked into, and apologize.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on reasonable condition one?
I have another question, can I ask it?
Councilmember Smith, yes.
Will the trees, tree line be preserved or part of it be preserved? And I'm asking for somebody who likes the bird, likes the birds.
Mr. Smith, this is not related to, is it related to outdoor lighting standards we're talking about?
Yes, we're, under that, under that guise, I'm asking that question.
All right.
Steve Brehop, for the record, and if Ms. Scanlon can bring the exhibit back up again, please.
And I'm thinking of the ones between them and Cambridge Square, between you and Cambridge Square.
Yes, I understand, and I was going to point out which ones could not be preserved and which ones we believe would be preserved. If you look at the ones at the far northwest corner near the amphitheater, where there was a lot of concern about noise and light in that area, those at the northwest corner would be preserved. The ones between the building and Cambridge Square, some are on this site, some are on the Cambridge Square site, obviously, the ones on the Cambridge Square site would be preserved. The ones on this site, we will attempt to preserve, and then the ones at the far eastern edge are eight to 10 feet onto this site, those cannot be preserved. Okay, thank you for responding to that.
Further questions on RC one? Seeing none, we will go to the public now for comment on reasonable condition one only. If anybody would like to comment on it, please come to the podium. There will be, there's no public comment on it? You'll have two minutes.
Okay, I am still concerned about that amphitheater.
Please state, could you state your name, please?
Connie Cookland, resident of the area. I'm still concerned about that amphitheater and not understanding why it is so essential. The Cambridge Square residents are elderly and disabled, and most of them go to bed at 8:00. And I suspect most of the residents in this building will not, and an amphitheater will encourage them to stay outside. I'd like to, again, talk about quality of life and consider what else could be in that space. I've suggested to Tyler, what about some kind of an exercise area? I mean, there are many things that would be wonderful in that green space that are not allowed at all. So that is a major concern for me about quality of life. The light, I'm looking at in the reverse, I'm looking at the lack of light. Oh, I guess I shouldn't talk about that right now, right? Okay, so just I'm concerned about the lack of light, and I don't quite know what Tyler's explained here. I'd love to hear more about how those setbacks will change things. But certainly, light across a property line? Hmm, I mean, that doesn't get in your window? I don't know. That, that seems like quite an ordinance that is not going to help very much for the elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on reasonable condition one? If there's no other public comment, we'll come back to council for a second round of questions, no more than 10 minutes. Are there any follow-up questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I don't know if Mr. Curry wanted to respond to that public comment since he arose, so I wanted to give him a chance.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make this real quick. That amphitheater is not near and dear to my heart. I mean, seriously, it was an afterthought to begin with. I'm happy to throw it out the door because we are still dealing with the change in the landscape in the northwest corner. That's not going to change. The sidewalk and stuff down there is, it is what it is, and we were just trying to be creative. So I'm not going to take that space away. It still is what it is, I can't change it. Let's just get rid of the fact that it's an amphitheater. It's nothing. It's a place to go sit and read a book. That's it.
Thank you.
If I can actually ask a follow-up question to that, would you please define what your understanding of an amphitheater is?
Well, my understanding is a place that gives you a platform to perform outside.
But I mean, this reasonable condition removes the right to amplify any sound from that point.
That's right, but it doesn't remove the fact that I can still take my acoustical guitar and sit out there on a Saturday afternoon and, right? I mean...
Is there any, anything like special about what you had planned, how you had planned to prepare the site in order to help amplify sound, even acoustically?
No.
So amphitheaters are euphemism for an empty space that you put benches in?
Yes. Again, we're dealing with the topography and the change in elevation in that left northwest corner of the property. That is not going to change, I believe, and so we're still going to have the sitting stones there and...
Understood, that's all, thank you. Any further questions before I go to comments on RC one? Seeing a question, Councilmember Flaherty?
Question in the process. The reasonable condition addresses amplification of sound and potential for mitigating light pollution or limiting light pollution. How will we not vote on this? Would this reasonable condition be withdrawn now in light of the petitioner's statement just now? How is that incorporated into the planned unit development that we vote on now? Does that make sense, that it has sort of changed the condition we are looking at?
It's only changed part of it. It's not a change in writing. Part two is still applicable. There's still a concern about light emanating from the building, and it requires the building to comply to the outdoor lighting standards. But I mean, I think you can argue in the final comment that if it's unnecessary to vote on this.
Well...
I don't think it changes it until there's an amendment to the amendment.
I guess the other part of the question remains, which is, if Mr. Curry wishes to scrap the amphitheater from the plans, does that need to be incorporated in some way by way of amendment tonight in order to actually include that in?
I mean, it needs to be in writing. Mrs. Sherman?
I would direct that question to Ms. Scanlon. Is the amphitheater a necessary and element of this project?
Okay, so first, I would, no, I would say no. So, and what, what they've designed here for this amphitheater is, it looks like three tiers of limestone seating with a flat concrete area in the front of it, and that's basically about it. So whether that's installed or not, I don't know that you can stop people from going out there on a Saturday and playing their guitar, if that's all they're able to do now, I'm not sure. I think you would all would have to decide what the benefit of making sure this tiered seating is removed. I think it could be a nice, I mean, we saw it as a nice outdoor area that was initially pitched as available to not just residents, but basically anyone in the area. No, I don't think it's integral, and as a reminder, we're not approving a site plan here, we're approving a zoning code for this lot. So something like this, if they don't want to put it in, we wouldn't, you know, hold them to it. It's not integral.
Okay, let's go now to debate on reasonable condition one. Any comments from members? We have 10 minutes, two minutes per person, per bite. Anybody? No, 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 no. I'm going to say one thing. I, I think, I'll take my two minutes. The, the amphitheater is in name only. I mean, we can, we could amend this to just say there will be no amphitheater. I don't think it's necessary at this point. I think that... I think that we've discussed it enough to realize that it's a sitting area. So, I don't see any harm in passing this as it is. Like, it doesn't really, it just puts restrictions on the place. You know, like, I don't, it puts restrictions that would prevent it from being used in a way that was a concern of the neighborhood. So, I think we should just pass it as it is. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on reasonable condition one?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
The reasonable condition passes nine zero. Let's go to the next one. We have a motion in a second. Will Councilmember Rosenbarger please present? You'll have three minutes.
This reasonable condition is asking to record in writing that the petitioner install an art feature or green screen on both sides of the parking garage that are visible to the public. So, the main side of the garage is on Longview Avenue. That's what we're looking at on the screen. And then, the north side also has just a little bit of garage present that we would also request an art installation of some kind.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilmember Rosenbarger? On my left? On my right? Seeing none, we will go to, can we hear from petitioner and staff? At least, response to it, is there any objection to?
No objection.
Any objection from petitioner?
We have no objection.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, if there are no questions, we will go to the public for comment on reasonable condition number three. Seeing none, we come back to the council for debate. Is there any comment on RC three? Call the question. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on reasonable condition number three?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes. That passes nine zero. Shall we go to the next one?
Move that reasonable condition number four.
Needs a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will Councilmember Flaherty please present? You'll have three minutes.
Yes, following discussions at the Land Use Committee meetings, this reasonable condition specifies that the roof of the parking structure will meet the cool or vegetated roof standards as laid out in the new Unified Development Ordinance as adopted by Plan Commission earlier this year. Specifically, that anticipates 70% coverage of either a white surface, which again is specified in code, or a vegetated roof. It includes a provision that allows for that percentage to be reduced if the installation of rooftop solar photovoltaic panels require it. Reasonable condition number six relates to solar energy. And if, in examining the economics of that and how much they would like to install, if going above the minimum, petitioner decides that they want to do more solar that would impact this 70% threshold we wanted to allow for that. So, that is the reasonable condition.
Thank you. Can we get a brief comment from petitioner and staff as to their opinion of reasonable condition number four?
Yeah, we have no objection to that.
I have no objection to that.
Okay, we've heard a presentation. We'll have now 10 minutes for questions. Anyone have a question about RC number four? To my right? To my left? Seeing no questions, we're going to go to the public for comment on reasonable condition number four. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, Steve Akers from Park Ridge Neighborhood. I would just like to underline that we would love to see some sort of solar installation on the rooftop to lower the carbon footprint of this building and to power things that are in the building, such as lighting or pumps for the cisterns or anything related to that. So, I don't know, if you could ask Tyler specifically for what that's going to look like, but we would love to see that, rather than a white roof or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on reasonable condition number four? Seeing none, we come back to the council for debate. Is there anyone with a comment on RC four? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you'll have three minutes.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Akers and say that there is a forthcoming reasonable condition number six about solar photovoltaic panels, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on RC four?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith, sorry.
It's okay. I answer anyway.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. We now go to RC number five. Motion in a second. Will Councilmember Rosenbarger present? You'll have three minutes.
This condition is asking to record in writing that on-site parking only be offered à la carte, so that it is not included in rent. The purpose of this is that people will then think about it a little more than normal. And as the petitioner has already spoken to tonight, he's really prioritizing and encouraging walkability and bikability. So, it's just a way to have folks think about their use of an automobile.
Thank you. Can I get feedback from petitioner and staff?
No objection.
Does petitioner have any objection to RC number five?
Says no, right here.
No objection.
Thank you. There's the presentation. We'll now go to, stop that, to 10 minutes of questions. Are there any questions about RC five? To my left, to my right? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on reasonable condition number five. Yes. Seeing no public comment, we come back to council for debate. Is there any comment on reasonable condition number five? Or a motion? Call the question. Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on RC five?
Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
An enthusiastic yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. We now go to RC number six. Motion in a second. Will Mr. Flaherty go ahead?
Yes, so this reasonable condition specifies a minimum power capacity of 15 kilowatts for rooftop solar photovoltaic panels. For reference, that is roughly equivalent to two large, or perhaps three medium-large home power systems, solar power systems. The second element requires the installation of at least 10 electric vehicle charging stations in an area of priority parking. And a design for the garage that includes features such as conduit throughout the facility that would allow for the garage to be easily retrofitted in the future for more electric vehicle charging stations if demand for stations grows over time. That element of the reasonable condition mirrors the guidelines for the redesign of the Fourth Street Garage that council approved last year. And with the help of planning and transportation staff to review the design elements, that will be accomplished. And that is the whole of the reasonable condition.
Opinion from petitioner and staff?
No objection from us.
I have no objection, but I will say this. I will use this opportunity to work with the city, Alex Crowley, to fine-tune their model in a commercial use setting. Because right now, they don't, they have one, it's more residential-based. So, that's kind of the initiative moving forward in 2021, I believe. And so, in working with them to, how this model works in this sort of setting in a commercial use. So, based on that, I do not have any objections to this RC.
Thank you. We'll now come back to council for questions on RC six. Any questions to my left? To my right? I have one. I wonder how much power you're thinking about installing, Mr. Curry? And do you plan to be able to have it up and running in time to take advantage of the state's 15-year net metering, which I think expires the end of 2022?
Well, it's our hope that the building is certainly up and running by 2022. It's actually our hope that the building is up and running in late 2021. But, considering all of this, you know, we hope to break ground this year. And so, I think that we can get it done in order to take advantage of that.
Right, so, I mean, that's the other question then, is I think there's more room on the roof than a 15-kilowatt array would.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, do you have any thoughts about how much you might want to build before the state deadline for 15 years and that metering runs out, which will make it cost-effective?
I don't, because, I'll be honest with you, I don't fully understand the cost impact on adding this solar power energy to this sort of a project. And so, it's going to be a learning curve for us also. And I did a couple crash courses here in the last 24 hours to get where I needed to get for this, but I don't have a plan.
Was it correct to assume that you're not going to have separate power bills for each apartment? That it'll be one electrical meter?
That's right.
So, I mean, it does benefit you, or at least your tenants, to pass on the savings that the solar would bring. So, I mean, do you plan to only build the minimum, or do you expect that you'll build more than 15 kilowatts? I mean, my house is a third of that. It's just 101 one-house, so it doesn't sound like very much for a building with 300 people plus in it.
Yeah. You know, I can't honestly answer that question. I would like to build more. I think it's a great initiative, and there are benefits to it, especially long-term. So, we're going to put in conduit in the parking garage in thinking that that is going to expand the use of charging stations. So, and I'm sure there's a lot that's going to change over the next couple of years moving forward on the solar initiative. So, I think it's wide open.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for the sponsor or the petitioner, the staff? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on RC six.
From Park Ridge, I think Tyler's pledge to look at it is sufficient. I think, I don't think we need to hold him to a certain amount, since he's still, it is new commercially, even though it is around some commercial places I know of in Bloomington, the Auto Place, I can't think of the name of it, sorry. But, I think...